Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Lee Bowman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochet. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us this evening. Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Disart.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner is not with us. And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Fochet. First item on the agenda is an education committee item. Ms. Lemoine, you're the other chairman for the education committee. If you would please handle this issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 2.1 is the long-range strategic plan and action plan. And we have Ms. Mary Lametta here with us this evening. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. And tonight, I'm going to provide you with an update on the district long-range strategic plan. And just to let you know, the first page of your handout shows our vision mission and our four big goals, along with it, the objectives we have. Thank you so much. Under each goal, then the next large handout you have is the action plan, by which we think will help us reach the objectives to help us meet the goals. So what I'm going to do, just to give you a quick overview, I'm going to do a quick overview of the four goals only. Then, I'm going to give you an overview of the changes we made in the action plan. So in the action plan, we struck through anything that we took off from last year, and then we highlighted in yellow anything we added to it. So I'm going to give you, I'll first read the four goals, just to familiarize everyone. And then I have an overview statement of what's different in the action plan, just, you know, in the interest of time. So as you see here on the cover page, on our overview page, goal one is to provide teaching, learning, and assessment that assure student achievement. Goal two is to have effective and certified employees through ongoing recruitment and professional development. Goal three is responsible finances and support services, which enhance teaching and learning, and teaching and learning environments, which are safe and secure. And finally, goal four is imaging positive impressions of our school system. So underneath each of those four goals, as I mentioned, here are our objectives. And then the next big handout you have is the strategic, the action plan, by which we think that will help us to meet our goals. So in yellow, you'll see changes. Anything struck through is something we took out. So just to give you an overview of goal one, what we added. We added the implementation of the new Gallup page social studies curriculum that the curriculum team presented to you in the prior meeting. We also added the Open SciEd science new curriculum that we added in. Because I mentioned to you last time, we felt like we had the Amplify Science. We weren't meeting our goals with it. So this was a new tier-one state curriculum, and our contract was up with Amplify. So we went ahead and went to try Open SciEd. Secondarily, we added, in literacy, we used to use mastery guides for intervention. We switched. What you'll see in there is we struck out mastery guides, and we're using the Ufly and the Hagerty, which are the current literacy intervention materials. We also added some mention of STAR reading assessments and some DIBELS reports that we're going to use to help us evaluate what we do. Additionally, we added some language for the school leadership teams to set goals and develop a plan that would help them track growth in English and math, and also track growth for their lowest 25% achieving students. Because with the new state-proposed accountability system, they're going to have a big focus on the lowest 25% of your students. And so that won't be in effect really until the '25, '26 school year. Next school year is still the same system we have. We want to get them thinking about it and making a plan now, so we can be a year ahead and get our ducks in a row. And if anybody's as old as me, you might remember years and years ago, the state had a super-sub group you used to have to track. And that was all your students who were approaching basic or onset, and they wanted you to track them and track their growth. So it's sometimes, you know, things come back around. So that's sort of that, is to take a big look at the lowest 25% and make a plan to make sure they're growing. We also added an item for our special education supervisors to provide a two-day training in July for our regular and special education teachers to help give them strategies to address behavioral and academic improvement for our special education students, as well as our regular education students. Because many of those strategies that will help the special needs students will also help the regular ed students as well. So we did add that. We saw that as a need. So under goal two, which is the effective and certified employees through ongoing recruitment and PD, we replaced the initials NIET, which that was, is, the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching. You'll see that struck out. And in place of that, we have the new LDOE LEADS, which LEADS stands for Louisiana Educator Advancement and Development System. So the state partnered with NIET, and NIET helped them revamp the teacher evaluation mechanism tool that we now use to evaluate teachers, instead of the old compass that was really based on a small portion of the Danielson rubric. So they used to base the bones of the NIET rubric and made some adjustments, and it's now going to be Louisiana Educator Rubric. So you'll see that struck out and those changed there. And it's the Louisiana Educator Advancement and Development System that's in place of NIET. We also added to be in compliance with Act 260, which requires numeracy training for all teachers in grade four to eight. We've added an action item in our plan to address the teachers participating and taking those modules throughout the course of the school year. And that's due by August of 2025. So we do have that in our plan. Big picture things in goal three, which goal three is responsible finances and support services, which enhance teaching and learning environments, which are safe and secure. You'll see that last plan, last year in the plan, we added security systems and different camera systems for security. So where we had implement that last year, we just struck through implement and changed it to maintain. Because now that we put those systems in last year, we're now going to maintain them and make sure they're all working in good order. Additionally, we, in the last plan, we implemented a, we began to implement a tool for the bus, bus drivers and bus transportation, where to help them manage the routes and manage the bus service. What we're going to add to it this year is a parent app. So the parents can, from their phones, see when their child boards the bus at school. If it's 3:15, it'll say, Andrew Jackson, 3:15. If the child's dropped off in the bus stop at, you know, I'm going to say Ms. Russo's here, so I'm going to say 3:25. I'm going to give her 10 minutes. Dropped off at 3:25, it'll tell you you dropped off at 3:25 in the home address, and they'll be able to see where the bus is and location to the school. In addition, with bus splits, because you know, sometimes we have some occasions where the driver's calling sick and we have to do bus splits, the parents will know what bus they're going to be on, because it won't be their normal bus. And they'll see when they board that bus. Additionally, on the bus, there'll be an iPad that'll have the students who are now on the split on the iPad for the driver. So the driver will know, if I try to get on the bus and it's not my split bus, it's going to say, no, that child doesn't belong on this bus. And it'll tell the bus driver what bus the child needs to get on. So it's really going to help the parents have an idea of where the kids are, when they should be getting home, and then it'll help the drivers to know if there's a split, who should be on their bus, and things like that. So we do think it's going to be a big, you know, I think, a big security and safety improvement there. So we do have that. Under goal three, we also added an item to address some of our long-term building and mechanical needs, where we did some replacement this year of some chillers, some AC chillers, some boilers, and some rooftop air handlers. So that was a need that we felt like if we put some things like that in this year, it's going to get us through a few more years. And then finally, under goal four, one main thing we did was we did have to help the community be aware of the dual enrollment opportunities. So what we added was to increase family awareness of the college and career and AP and some work-based learned experiences, because that's going to be another focus for the new accountability system. So we did add that in to make the community aware of that. So I know it's a large document, because it does have a lot of detail in it, but that was just the overview of the big picture changes that we had, and just to kind of familiarize with anything, you may see a change in there. And that's, that concludes the overview, if you have any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, comprehensive look at the strategic plan and how these activities have evolved and the changes for this year. Any questions for Ms. Lametta? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'd like to say that a great idea with that app. That's great, you know, parents or loved ones can check on their loved ones and see where they are. Great idea and great application. Great job.
We did test it in summer school, for middle school. So we did have, we had one of our phones, and we did see if a student got on the bus, got off the bus, and we watched the mapping. So we did some tests of it in the middle school, summer school. Not to the parents, but internally, we wanted to work all the bugs out. So by the end of summer school, by the end of June, we had everything working. So it's all going to be working in August. I did the sign of the cross, because you know, sometimes you set up for a PD that night, and the next morning, when you walk in, something doesn't work. So, you know, with technology, but we tested it all summer and, you know.
And what we did was, right after the end of the school year, we brought the bus drivers in for a day to go over training for them. And the ones who did drive the middle school, summer school, actually were the pilot group. But we trained all the rest. Now, they'll be implementing it for the first time when we open the school year, and we're going to be getting that information out to the parents. So I'm sure we'll have a little bugs to work out. But the bus drivers, it seems like, who have tried it are now becoming more comfortable with it, so.
Another good caveat to it is it'll give the driver verbal turn-by-turn instructions, because they know their route, but if they have to take a split route, and they may not be as familiar with it, it'll go to a black screen to not distract them. But it'll give the driver turn-by-turn instructions to do the new route if they have to take a split route. So we think that'll help also with speed, you know, the drop-offs as well in the afternoon. And just so you know how they know the kids are on the bus, we are going to have IDs for the students. So as the bus driver sees the tablet of the students, and we did it this summer, they just come on and tap there. It's an RFID, like we used to enter the buildings. And they'll tap it on the card reader, and then it'll automatically register that they're there. And if they forget their ID that day, the name's on the screen. The bus driver just clicks load, and it knows, it'll tell you 12 students have loaded, or 14 students have loaded. And it'll let you know zero are left when they're all off the bus. So, and the kids did it, the elementary kids. We bought some lanyards retractable, because they usually keep the ID on their book bags, so they can just, from their book bags, test it. And that was actually Ms. Randy Tucker's idea, because for K-1, it was a little harder for them to reach it with their bag. So the retractable, let them reach the ID, and it worked well. So we're excited about it. I think it's going to help, you know, the parents and then the bus drivers for sure. So hopefully reduce some of the anxiety, you know, in the evenings.
Okay. Other questions for Ms. Lametta? Anything else, Mr. Rodriguez? Oh, Ms. Disart?
Ms. Lametta, have the test scores come back from the latest?
No, ma'am. They have not. They, what they say is the week of June, week of July 15th, and this is, I think, my 24th year in central office, 34th year in the district. Whenever they say the week of, it's Friday at 7 o'clock at night. But I mean, that's what we usually get, you know. So one time it was midnight. So, you know, hopefully it's next week.
Well, hopefully we'll get them before the beginning of school, so we can, you know, help those students in, in those areas that need the help. In the planning process, too.
In the planning.
Very, you know, for the teachers and the administrators, in terms of placement of kids, services we need to offer, maybe some tweaks and changes in where we place them. It's really problematic that they come back so late, you know, right before the school year starts. But we have no control over that. And I know for years, we've been asking to get those test scores back earlier than, a couple of weeks before school starts for staffing and, you know, planning for the teachers. But to know, to know help from that, in that area of getting them, getting those test scores earlier so that we can prepare for the following year. Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Agenda item number 2.2 is an update.
Could, could we have some type of a motion to advance this?
Oh, yes, yes.
Because what we do, you know, just to give a little bit, as you, as we all know, this was a five-year plan. So from, as you can see, from 2021 to 2026. So next school year, we'll be spending that time in the 2025, '26 school year of overhauling, taking a look at the goals, making whatever changes we feel we need to do. But in this five-year plan, where we've outlined some of the objectives and the indicators, each year we come back and try to tweak it for an action plan for that year. And we've done that with our whole administrative team and our curriculum staff and such. And then we bring it to y'all, just to, you know, show you what changes we're proposing for the coming year, what the emphasis is going to be, or anything kind of new that we're adding to achieve these goals. Then we bring it next week, when we do our administrative in-service. We present it, and we do it to all of our school-based administrators, teacher leaders, instructional coaches, everyone who has not been a part of doing the action plan itself. See if they want to tweak it in any way or add to it. Then we come back to y'all at the regular meeting in July, at which point you then, you know, approve it and say, hey, this looks good. Y'all have gone through the whole thing, made the tweaks, and if you have anything else you'd want us to really take a look at. And we do that at the end of July meeting. So we kind of need a motion to pass this through then to the full board.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we send this strategic plan to the full board with the recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Disart. So we have a second, seconded by Ms. White. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, did you vote? Okay, motion passes 9-0. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 2.2 is an update on third and fourth grade summer literacy instruction. And we have with us Dr. Kristi Salta-Lamachia. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, we had 197 third graders that attended our summer literacy program. And of our 197 third graders, 24 were L students, English Language Learner students. Of the 24, 23 out of 24 showed growth on our core phonics screener, which is substantial. So our core phonics screener really zones in on what phonics skills the students have deficits in. And then the teachers work on those specific skills. And of course, on our summer literacy program, our class sizes are much smaller than, you know, our normal class sizes. So it gives the opportunity of our teachers to really focus in and zone in on their skills. Of the 24 L students, 16 showed growth on at least two of our assessments. So we give three assessments during summer literacy. Our STAR reading assessment, our core phonics assessment, and a MACE assessment. So that test for phonics, it tests for comprehension on two different assessments. It's comprehension, because you know, sometimes students on one, they may be really high, and we're like, hmm, let's go back and relook at that again to make sure that's accurate. So it's really great when we see that in more than one area. Their average growth on the MACE assessment for our L students was .61 growth. And remember, they come for two weeks. So, you know, it's a short amount of time, but very focused instruction during that time. Our third grade sped students, we had 41 out of the 197 students were special education students. 40 out of 41 showed growth on the core phonics screener. 33 out of 41 of our sped students showed growth on at least two of the literacy screeners. And their average growth was 1.41 on the MACE for two weeks. Our regular education students, these are our non-sped or L students, 132 regular education students, 129 out of 132 showed growth on core phonics. 123 out of 132 of our regular education students showed growth on at least two out of three of the literacy assessments. And their average growth was 2.35 on the MACE in two weeks. Our fourth grade students, we had 172 fourth grade students attending our summer literacy intervention program. 10 out of the 172 were L learners. All 10 showed growth on the core phonics. Eight out of 10 showed growth on at least two of the three literacy assessments. And their average growth was 4.45 on the MACE in two weeks, which coincides with, these are our fourth graders versus our third graders. So our third graders are still trying to close in some of those phonics apps. They're still, even though our standards are saying they're reading to learn, they're still really learning to read through third grade. So our fourth graders, of course, are showing more growth, because they're already really versed on those reading skills, but still may have some deficits that's catching them. But they definitely, you can see that progression. MACE tests reading comprehension, which is at the end of the reading progressions. We start with phonemic awareness and go through reading comprehension. For our sped students, 33 out of 172 fourth grade students, or special education students that were in our program, 32 of 33 showed growth. 30 out of 33 special education students showed growth on at least two of the three literacy assessments. And their average growth was 7.5 on the MACE in two weeks for our special education students in fourth grade. Our regular education students, we had 129 fourth grade regular education students. 114 out of 129 showed growth on the core phonics. And 119 out of the 129 showed growth on at least two of the three literacy screeners. And our fourth grade regular education students had an average growth of 7.38 on the MACE in two weeks. So they really did, I feel like, you know, closed up some of those deficits. And especially our fourth grade students getting ready to go into fifth grade, the curriculum, you know, gets a little bit harder for fifth grade, especially in our comprehension area, so.
Thank you so much for this great report, and truly for drilling down into these subgroups, too, so that we could look at the achievement at each of these levels. So thank you for that. Questions for Dr. Salta-Lamachia? Julie?
Thank you for all of this. I have a question, because I'm not, I'm not getting to the littles.
I understand.
Students, I understand.
Okay.
What, the growth, what is it? Is it a year? Is, what's the period?
So typically, that's going to be, so if you look at for MACE, 7.5. Just to give you a point of reference, for a typical fourth grader, 17 words in three minutes when they're doing a comprehension is on level. So these students came in below 17, but they grew over seven words when they were assessed from the beginning to the end. So again, that is tremendous growth.
So it's how many words they're reading for a minute?
It's how many words they're getting correct for comprehension in a minute. So for fluency, we check how many words correct in a minute. And, okay, yeah.
You're welcome. Any other questions, Ms. Disart?
Just a comment. Thank you so much for this information, and it's, it's great to see that there was growth in every area. The ELL, the special ed, and then our regular ed also. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the administration and also all the teachers who worked during the summer to help these students try to achieve better, better grades and better reading skills. So we want to thank them also.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you so much for your hard work and your presentation. Okay, back to you, Ms. Disart.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Next item on the agenda, personnel changes for July 2024. And we have Ms. Pritchett with us tonight. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. You have the changes in front of you. You can see we have no retirements or no, and no administrative appointments for these changes. We're just hiring away.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time on personnel changes? Okay. It's good to see that list gets smaller.
Yes, it is. We're doing good this year.
And what positions do you still need filled?
Well, so we do need a music teacher at AJ, because we just appointed the AP there was a music teacher. And we've had a couple of resignations, so we need one more elementary teacher. We need a math teacher at Shawmet High. We don't, we don't need many. We need maybe six. Right now, it's eight. Tomorrow morning, I think it'll be six. So, yeah, there's kind of a scatter.
We're also looking for bilingual EL teachers. So bilingual.
Bilingual EL teachers. Yes. And interpreters. Yes, translators, I should say, translators. We're going to put an advertisement out for that very soon.
And if we have qualified mental health professionals, social workers and such, we are always open to additions on that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Pritchett.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is an insurance item. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, we're going to have results for bid tabulations for the year 2024-25 student athletic insurance. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you. Okay, it's time to renew our athletic insurance. There aren't many companies that offer this type of insurance, but we are recommending that we renew with the current, we currently have Risk Services Louisiana. They're offering the same coverage for the same premium as last year. So we are recommending that we renew our policy with that company for next year for a premium of $40,394.75.
Any questions?
Ms. Disart? Will this include their, their annual checkup, whatever, prior to the beginning of school?
Yeah, well, the annual checkups are done through the Metis Foundation, the school-based health center.
So this is just for the insurance itself?
This is just the insurance, yes.
Okay. And there's a small cost for the physical?
Correct. That's included in the, with the students paid for the athletic insurance.
And how much is that?
$35.
Okay, so it hasn't increased in the last couple of years. Okay, thank you.
And it also, and this policy also includes the school time coverage for all students as well. So students within school time and on school-related trips.
Any more questions, Ms. Lemoine?
I was going to make a recommendation, or make a motion that we send this to the full board.
Any second? Second by Ms. Bowman, Lee Bowman. Ready to vote?
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, back to Ms. Lemoine. Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 5.1 is the 2024-2025 transportation rights. And we have Ms. Russo here with us this evening. Good evening.
She's got me a big binder with our routes for this year. It's big this year with the new program. They print out a little bigger. So, boy, you got a big binder to look at. But we've, we're starting out this year with the same number of routes as we ended last year. We did add, only add on a couple of new routes during the year. We got a couple more drivers, so during the year, we were able to add a couple of new routes. And so we're at that same level right now. We're at 43 drivers with 44 routes, but we have a driver that's going to be taking their task this month. So we should be starting out with a driver for every route, so that's pretty good. And if you kind of look and see, you can see the number of routes we have for each school and the riders and...
Questions for Ms. Russo? I want to take a moment to look through.
I might want to look for a minute and see. It looks a little different from previous years.
And Ms. Russo, you mentioned that right now, it looks like you're almost fully staffed for all the routes, but still...
Well, we still, we would always like to have a few more drivers, because then that would make our routes a little shorter. And some of, you know, sometimes it's, some of them get a little long, especially like when we have drivers out and they have to do a split route, so they get a little extras. You know, so we're always looking to have more drivers. And I do have to say, Ms. Votchay has been very good about any time I said, I got a couple people I want to hire. And she said, go ahead, you can hire them. So that's a good thing.
Hopefully, when we have the software for the parents to check, we can make these times.
Yeah. I think, I know it is, and when you look at it, you say, and well, I tell the parents, in a perfect world, the bus is going to get to you at like 7:11. But you know how it is. Some kids aren't ratty, and a bus, you know, might be a little slow. It has some traffic, but I said, in a perfect... traffic. But I said, in a perfect world, it's going to work. But when you look at those numbers, sometimes you think, oh, my goodness, that's kind of fast.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Russo?
Does this motion require any action? Okay. All right. So if there are no questions, we will entertain a motion at this point. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman to send this to the full board. Okay, and we have a seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Okay, agenda item number five point two is the consideration of adopting the new school board policy JGCF, and we have Mr. Morales here with us this evening. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I don't want, I don't want to confuse you all. If you look at the sheet that I provided you there, it looks like there are two policies here, but it's really only one policy. What used to be JGCF, the company that we use changed that to JGCF-A, which will now be a subset of the new JGCF. So it's not a new policy, and I included it just so you can see it. But if you, if you look at the top of it, it actually just shows the only change on it is to go from JGCF to JGCF-A. So there's no actual policy change here. It's literally just the lettering. Okay?
So just a change in the categorization?
Correct. It's going to be now a subset of the new JGCF, which is what we're about to go. Okay. So I just want to let everybody know, it's not two new policies, it's only one. One's just changing the subset.
Thank you for that clarification.
But the new policy is JGCF. It's behavioral health support for students. It's coming from Act 324 of the 2024 legislative session. And out of this legislative session, there are many more acts coming. However, this one was like a special act that they wanted us to get to you all before school started. Okay. So I'm going to go over just kind of what it is. It says, "Act 324 addresses behavioral and emotional challenges which may cause students to be at risk for their behavior to escalate into aggression or disruption, causing suspensions, expulsions, or juvenile delinquency. JGCF gives guidance to school personnel to identify behavioral and emotional challenges in their student population. It also requires that a principal or his or her designee meet with the student and their guardian at the second suspension to discuss the student's behavior and counseling, as well as the referral of the student and the family to support services for assessment and treatment if it's deemed necessary during that meeting." Okay. The Act also requires that the school board report to Louisiana Department of Education and the House and Senate Committees on Education the number of students identified as possibly having behavioral, emotional challenges, the number of students for which a conference was scheduled, and the number of students referred for assessment and supportive services. The report shall be submitted annually July 1st and shall reflect data from the previous school year. So that is what the actual new policy is, and I included the, the policy as it states for you all and the act that it comes from. So you'll see, it says new policy at the top, which says JGCF, and then the act that basically goes over what the new policy is.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Ms. Rodney.
So I'm clicking everything. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if this is to you
Is that kind of you?
Yeah, or to Ms. Votchay. So when the second meeting happened, when the second suspension happened, and a meeting happens with a parent, how will this assessment to determine if the child needs to be seen by a behavioral specialist?
It's, if, on a second suspension, what, what this act says is that the administrator will have someone on site that they conference, which, which will be the school counselor, basically. If they feel that the behavior may be caused by one of these social or emotional challenges, then they would schedule the meeting with the parent and refer, and talk with the parent, and refer to services within the community. Now, if it's something like a suspension, you know, where they don't really feel, I don't know, just say, left cla, left the campus, whatever, well, I just skipped, skipped school and I went to lunch somewhere else, and maybe it's a suspension or something. They may deem that. Well, that's really not something, other behaviors along with that don't suggest that it might be a social or emotional challenge. But if they feel that there is, by the time the second suspension occurs, that it could be something, then they would schedule it. And the assistant principal dealing with that would conference, would refer to the counselor who would then make the suggestion at that point, and then we'd call the parents. Is the way that I think most of the school systems are going to approach this.
Yes.
Because it's very hard, you know, to make that determination. We're not in, we're not in the business of doing a full psychological evaluation. But if we see signs that there may be some problems, and we conference with the parent, part of the real problem, and I think in this community, is there are not enough services to refer students and parents to that are local. It requires transportation a lot, sometimes to the city or another community, which is difficult, difficult for parents. And it's also difficult for working parents as well to schedule some of these things. But I do know that there have been concerns from our counselors and our, and all of our staff in terms of referral. Metropolitan has been very helpful in a lot of cases, but if you're on a waiting list to see people, it's very, very difficult for many parents to get that scheduled in a place that's easily accessible to them.
Right.
So use some influence and open up some places down here.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. Well, we will, at this point, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we send to the full board, a recommendation to adopt the new school board policy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, everyone. I'll see you all at the next meeting. And then when we start in August, there are a few more, I'll say, a few more that I'll be bringing in front of you as well. So thank you all so much.
A lot of bills have been passed this session.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Okay, agenda item number five point three is to adopt the 2023-2024 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, and we have Mr. Fernandez. Good evening.
Okay, we have the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. We, school board is required to adopt this in conjunction with our audit every year. Our audit, the bulk of our audit will be done in September, but they will start doing some of their field work in August. So we want to adopt this so that we can present to the auditors when they start their work. The compliance questionnaire, like I said, we adopt it every year. It's basically just gives information about the school, the governmental entity. It's required to be adopted by all governmental agencies and quasi-governmental agencies. Just gives information about the entity and asks a series of questions regarding state laws and whether we've complied with them or not. So we answered yes to all the things that apply to us. So I'm going to ask you to adopt this so we can present to our auditors when they begin their audit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the compliance questionnaire.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
And just one further thing. The last page, it requires us to give information on all principal, principal officials of the system. So it'll have names, dresses, and phone numbers. If you will look at your information, if there are any corrections that need to be made, just let me know before the next meeting, and we can make that correction if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, then we'll toss it to you, Ms. Votchay.
Okay, just that we've been, you know, many people think that the summertime is such a relaxing time for school systems, and I would argue that it's really one of our busiest times. We've just had the completion of, the completion of most of our summer programs for kids. We still have a few that are active, like our academic games camp and our band camp will be coming and those types of things. But along with that, the month of July is really reserved for much of our in-service and professional development. So next week, from the 15th through the 19th, all of our administrators will be in in-service the entire week. But the first three days, and we bring in our teacher leaders and our instructional coaches on many of these days, and the first three days are going to be the training on the new, that Ms. Lumetta had mentioned, the new evaluation rubrics for both the educators and the leaders. Since we went through a three-day training last summer on the teacher educators rubric, we just need a one-day update, which we'll be doing on the 15th. The next two days, we'll have the in-service on the leaders rubric. And then that Thursday and Friday, we have reserved for our departmental information, going over legislation, all of the business aspects on that Thursday, the new accountability proposal, and then the school improvement plans that each school writes each year. And that hopefully will all be completed by, you know, next Friday, the 19th. That'll be the entire week. We then have many ancillary trainings for teacher leaders and instructional coaches and new teachers and our Teach St. Bernard group as well. But all of our new teachers, teachers new to the district, are going to be reporting that following Friday, the 26th, they'll be going to their schools to get whatever information they need from their prospective schools. And then the week of July 29th, they'll come back and we'll have the new teachers workshop on that week of the July 29th. All of our teachers will report that Friday on August 2nd. To begin our in-service, our teachers will report on the 2nd, have in-service on the 2nd. Then Monday, the 5th, 6th, and 7th, our support people report on the 6th. We'll have our opening on the 7th for our employees. And then welcome our students the first day on August 8th. So you can see from now until the beginning of school, we don't have even a day where we have no training, in-service, PD, or obligation. So it's going to be a very, very busy next three weeks or so. But I think everybody's getting excited that we will, at least I am, that we'll be beginning a new school year and hopefully, and welcoming our kids back on that Thursday, August the 8th. Okay. And I do want to congratulate too, I don't think we had a meeting since we had the play this summer. I mean, this weekend, I don't know how many, last weekend, I don't know how many of you were able to go, but it was fantastic production. And I've got nothing but people who have seen it just are blown away about what the kids were able to do.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Anyone else on any of the notes?
Do we have a little, do we have a little update on Mr. Warner?
He's, he's doing, he's doing well. He is, you know, he's recovering. He's very upset. He still has, he went through the surgery fine. He's going through his rehab and physical therapy, and he's slowly, slowly getting better. So he's in much better spirits.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
So just to give everybody an update, following our last meeting, I met with, or spoke with, Councilman Everhart, and requested that he add something to their agenda to introduce an ordinance that would prohibit industrial development near any of our schools. He was able to get that drafted and get it on the agenda. It passed introduction. The way that the ordinance is currently written, it states a thousand feet. But the ordinance is going to have to go to the planning commission, who'll then review it and make any changes or suggestions, and then it'll go back to the council for adoption. So what it comes back looking like may be different than what it looks like now. But I wanted to make you guys all aware so that if you have suggestions or ideas about what this should look like, you should definitely reach out to your council person and, and ask them to consider that. And then once we have a better idea of what it'll look like, I'd like us to consider doing a letter in support of, because I think this is really an important piece of legislation that could prevent us being in similar situations in the future. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that happened last week.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.